Go, go.
I'm here.
Here.
Godfrey, Mr. Page.
Here.
Administrator Jones.
I'm here.
Request for modification approval.
Yeah, we had one late arriving thing came yesterday afternoon. Claudia of Rome, she was mentioning is asking for a letter of support for the Seed the Sound Center for Food and Farm Innovation for three counties. And so, we'd like to add this item 3B to your discussion.
Okay. Is there a motion? Motion to add item 3B and approve the agenda. Move and second it, discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Public comment for agenda items. Hi, Claudia.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, thanks. I had an opportunity to talk about your letter. Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks for your support and I can give you a little quick overview of the project if you are interested in.
That would be great.
Okay. So, it's a partnership with Jefferson Extension and Kitsap Extension to form a regional network of farm support services that will be based primarily at Trundista Ranch, which is owned by W2, it's in Jefferson County, but to have support offices in Clough and Kitsap. And basically, this will hugely increase our capacity to offer all sorts of services from the production side for farms, all the way through the business planning, project development, marketing, product development side as well. So, it's through the Department of Commerce, EDA, and it's for a three-year period. And I think about it.
Thank you. We'll ask, if you can stick around for a little bit, when we get to the agenda item, we'll ask if any commissioner has any questions regarding that, so. Thanks for that. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Do I not see the minutes for the previous meeting where the pro-ten commissioner was here for approval on this agenda?
They're not here yet. We are trying to sort out exactly how to approve those, since there was a recusal involved. So, once we get that sorted out, we'll bring that on the consent agenda or regular agenda for approval. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Randall Terry, 233 Riverside Road in Swim. Comment on, I guess, two agenda items. One is in support of anything that supports farms in Clough County or its surrounding neighbors. I'm in full support of organic garden, and I promote that. So, be that as it may, please enter that in if that is applicable. Another is, I sincerely hope that Clough County has improved their employment or reemployment of individuals with disabilities. I was here on the job in Clough County, and I had even asked for some white duty type stuff. And, well, now I'm unemployed, able to come here and give you guys a hard time. So, if you could kind of polish up your policies a little bit, feel greatly reduce some troubles you guys are having with your employees. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, consent agenda.
Thank you. Item 1A is approval of vouchers for the week of September 21st. Item 1B is approval of minutes for the week of September 21st. Item 1C is approval of payable for the period ending September 15th. Item 1D is a proclamation recognizing October as Disability Employment Awareness Month. And item 1E is a proclamation recognizing employers of individuals with developmental disabilities.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Seconded.
Move and second it, discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Of course, the presentations. I will read the two proclamations in order, which is recognizing October 2015 as Disability Employment Awareness Month. Whereas public law 176 enacted by Congress in 1945 designated the first week in October as National Employee Physically Handicapped Week, and in 1988, Congress changed the name to National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And whereas this is the 70th anniversary of celebrating this event, and whereas many citizens with developmental disabilities have the ability and desire to seek employment in settings that provide opportunities to earn competitive wages and benefits, enable them to reach their maximum potential, achieve economic self-sufficiency, and contribute to their communities, and whereas citizens with developmental disabilities have a positive impact on the economy by earning wages, purchasing goods and services in their communities, and becoming self-supporting, and whereas workplaces welcoming up the talents of all people, including people with developmental disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and strong economy. And whereas Clough County, a state-leading county, supports and encourages individuals with developmental disabilities to find employment, thus fostering the key objectives of advancing individual well-being and reducing the demand of public resources. And whereas individuals and their families, local government, the business community, and the general public benefit greatly from increased employment of people with developmental disabilities and share in the responsibility for achieving this goal. And whereas many local employers have chosen to partner with Clough County's Department of Health and Human Services and other local agencies to provide employment opportunities for individuals with developmental disabilities. Now, therefore, being proclaimed, the Board of Clough County Commissioners hereby recognizes October as Disability Employment Awareness Month in Clough County, and encourages all businesses and citizens to advocate for increased employment and inclusion in the community life of Clough County for all its individuals. And in quotations, "My disability is only one part of who I am." That's a motto. Signed this 29th day of September 2015 by the three commissioners. Tim, where Tim is. Before you come out, let me read the other ones. We'll just do both of these together. The second is a proclamation recognizing employers of individuals with developmental disabilities. It reads as follows. Whereas the purpose of National Disability Employment Awareness Month is to educate about disability employment issues and celebrate the many and varied contributions of Clough County's workers with developmental disabilities. And whereas work is a fundamental part of identity and offers purpose and the opportunity to lead an independent, self-directed life for all people, including individuals with disabilities. And whereas workplaces welcoming up the talents of all people, including people with developmental disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and a strong and diverse economy. And whereas the values and diversity of the people of Clough County have made this county the leader throughout the state of Washington in business and employment opportunities for individuals with developmental disabilities. And whereas many local businesses have chosen to see the individuals with developmental disabilities as individuals with talents that are an asset to their business. And whereas many local businesses have chosen to foster a culture respectful of individual differences, including disabilities, as a core value. And whereas many local employers have chosen to tap into this talented, committed workforce by partnering with Clough County's Department of Health and Human Services to provide employment opportunities for individuals with developmental disabilities. Now, therefore, being proclaimed, the Board of Clough County Commissioners hereby recognize, thank, and applaud the Clough County businesses that demonstrate insight and good business sense to hire workers with developmental disabilities, and encourage all citizens to join in efforts to increase employment and involvement of persons with developmental disabilities throughout Clough County, and to participate in the efforts to allow the full participation of people with developmental disabilities in economic, social, and work-life of the community, making Clough County inclusive for all. Again, in quotes, "My disability is only one part of who I am." And this proclamation is signed also on the 29th day of September 2015 by the three of us. And come on up. Receive these. Here, make a couple remarks, please. Field 13. Thanks for listening, yes. And for your.
Can't get away without hearing from me for a few minutes. Thank you very much. As you noticed, we did this again this year with two proclamations. It's very important to us to, first of all, recognize that this is National Disability Awareness Month, Employment Month. And that, as you heard, as you mentioned in the proclamation, it consists of 70th anniversary. It started out with just physical disabilities. We concentrate in this county on developmental disabilities because that is the mission that we work with here at the county. That is not to say that people with disabilities, physical otherwise, are not important, but our focus is on the developmental disabilities community. At this point, we have made many strides. Seventy years that we have noted that people with developmental disabilities have work-related needs. About 40 years ago was the first time an individual with a developmental disability was allowed to go to school, was guaranteed the right to be in school. And about 25 years ago, EDA came into effect. So, we're still young in this field, but we're working on it. What is really nice, we are a leader in this field, in the, basically, in the state and in the nation. The state of Washington is well-known for employment of individuals with developmental disabilities. Our county, we are the second highest percentage of individuals with developmental disabilities that are employed. And we're behind King County. We're after that at this point. And that is even more significant when you realize that we have an extremely high unemployment rate compared to much of the state. So, people with developmental disabilities are doing well. In the last year, just to give you an idea that we are continuing to work hard, we've added a net of 10 more individuals on our case, which is about 13 to 14 percent of that many more people employed or actually trying to be employed. But out of those 10 people, seven of them are already employed. And we've made major inroads in a number of companies here. And that is completely because we have a committed team in this community. We have the Developmental Disabilities Administration. We have our county Health and Human Services. We have businesses that are committed. We have business leaders that serve on the advisory committee that are committed. We have DPR as a part of that. We also have a number, and we have some providers in the audience today. We have Pierce Jones and Associates, Warrenside, and Concerned Citizens, who are providers, who do the groundwork for us, which is wonderful. And we really appreciate that you are willing to recognize what is going on and what is happening. Today, my case manager, Mary, is out of the field because she is honoring Safeway and Swim as the employer of the month. So, every month, we have been able to do that. And I'm just going to give you very quickly, and then I'll be quiet for you, just an idea of the breadth. We have 32 separate employers, and some of them are hiring multiple individuals right now. On the west side, we have Three Rivers Resort. In Swim, we have Dungeon Resort, memory theater, Goodwill, Holiday Inn Express, Wantafugu Cottages, Kingsway, Forest Square Church, McDonald's, Pacific Bay International, Safeway, and Swim Community School. In Port Angeles, we have Clough County Hospital Rees, Clough Transit, DSHS Children's Services, Crestwood Nursing Home, Fiero, Maroon Life Center, Goodwill, Higgins, Highway 101 Safeway, Jase Real Estate, Jack in the Locks, Lincoln Street Safeway, McDonald's, Warrenside Olympic Medical Center, Pacific Office Equipment, Service Masters, Smugglers Landing, St. Matthew's Church, TLC Petros, Walmart, Wolfie Law Office, and the YMCA. So, we have a breadth of people working together to keep us doing a good job. And the neat thing is, we have all of these people that are now taxpayers and participants in our community, which we are just thrilled about. Thank you for your support. Thank you for declaring all of these. The employer proclamation, a copy will go out to every employer, so they include it up in their business to show that they, what they believe in, and that they are a part of the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Neil. Appreciate all your hard work, Tim, as always. Commissioner Chaff, another question presentation. Commissioner Page.
Just had a good conversation with Department of Natural Resources. They read this every quarter. And something that just came out of the conversation was an expectation, we think, to perform better financially this year than was expected. Yet to trickle into the budget, but it's good news. And I think we had a conversation about the committee that's going to be taking a look at managing the Ian Arlen, or what alternatives might be considered. I actually have drilled into some of the detail on what's called a merge, that is the difference, variance, between what was authorized and what occurred. And something that jumped out at me that I never realized was that there's a big difference in that shortfall on the eastern part of Clough County compared to western part. On the eastern part, that represents 15 percent. On the western part, it's 8 percent. And I picked up on it when I was reading a flyer for District 1 in Pork's House, where they contrasted their property tax and timber revenue over two tenure periods. And I looked at that significant decline, $60,000 a year from $7,000 to $18,000 in early process, and I wondered, what is going on? And so, I crawled into the data, and I began to share that with Sue Trotovic, who's very helpful, very cooperative. But it now explains to me why we're seeing bond requests for the fire department, hospital, it's going to put one up in the category, and their ambulance service. And I'm really looking forward to helping that committee look at this issue.
Nothing for me, Tim?
Nothing for me either.
Okay. That's my time here. All right, let's see how far we can get before the hearing starts. Contracts and agreements.
Thank you. Item 2A is an agreement with the Washington State Department of Social and Health Services for jail services, as was discussed yesterday in work session, maximum amount of $40,000.
Move to review the jail services agreement. Move and second it, discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 2B is the State of Washington Division of Behavioral Health and Recovery agreement providing contract language and funding for the Cedar Grove Counseling Entity, maximum for chemical dependency treatment services, maximum amount of $105,336.
Move to approve the agreement to Cedar Grove. Second. Move and second it, discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 2C, State of Washington Division of Behavioral Health and Recovery agreement providing contract language and funding for specialty services II, providing comprehensive chemical dependency treatment services, maximum amount of $69,500.
Move to approve the provided agreement for specialty services II. Move and second it, discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 2B is a memorandum of understanding for Regional On-Site Sewing System Loan Program with Kitsap Public Health District, Watkin County Health Department, King County Health Department, Thurston County Public Health, Mason County Public Health, Tacoma Pierce County Health Department, Snohomish County, Grace Harbor County, Pacific County, Washington State Department of Health, and the Washington State Department of Ecology. No budget impact on this.
Move to approve the memorandum of understanding. Move and second. I think we had discussed this earlier, Andy, at a work session.
We did. We did. We did.
Okay, that's right. Okay. No further discussion. I'm sorry to interrupt. Anyways, when we discuss this, in an auction for people in Carlsburg area?
It is.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Administration.
Item 3A is consideration of the quickly and transferring 20 acres of roads to parks. And as we discussed yesterday in work session, this transfer originally was from parks to roads, so that was double it. It's coming back, and it will aid in the proper location of the, of the, what do you call it?
Discourse.
This facility.
Discourse.
Let's say what we need to go there.
Move to approve the quickly and B. Move and second it, discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 3B is a letter of support for the application from Clough County Jefferson Kitsap County to create the Seed the Sound Center for Food and Farm Innovation.
Move to approve the letter of support. Second. Move and second it. Questions for Claudia? Happy to support this. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Budget.
Item 4A is resolution adopting the following supplemental appropriations. Under enhanced 901, additional funding to the Washington State Military Department Emergency Management Division in the amount of $46,600. Under general fund auditor, the Help America Vote Act grant funding in the amount of $1,723. And under Superior Court dispute resolution, receipt of surcharge fees on new case filings in the amount of $4,800. Resolution for supplemental appropriations.
Move to approve the resolution for supplemental appropriations. Move and second it, discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. No bids, no awards, no community development, no public works. Hearing at 10:30. It looks like five or six minutes. So, we will, instead of sitting here staring at each other for five or six minutes, I'll open public comment on anything in general. And we will circle back to somebody that, after we close the hearing and do whatever we're going to do then, I'll reopen that. But let's go ahead and start, Ken. Go ahead.
Good morning. Kind of hope that this will come after the regular business, but I read with dismay the letter from the person that you selected as a pro-ten commissioner in paper recently. I welcomed you when you were installed on the commission some years ago, and I found your methods to be inconsistent with some of the methods and comments you made in his letter to the adjournment. I say to you that you're better than that, and I hope you don't use those methods. I think that the positive things that you've done speak for you, and I thank you for that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Mayor.
Stephanie Evelyn.
Oh, sorry.
I brought an announcement today about the Fall Flamingo Tour, which is going to be held at the Olympic Theater of Arts in Swim on October 1st, which is renowned, I believe, the flyer, something like that.
Thank you. Item 11, monitoring of any time. My name is Karen Pierce, and I am one of the vendors that contracts for the county through Tim, and then of course, through Iva's department. And I would just like to say thank you to everybody, to Tim, to Iva, to all of you, to the sheriffs, to the bus drivers, to the paratransit drivers, and to the employers. Having a job is one of the most important single things that happens in any adult's life. And I would just like to thank you all for your continued support. It's incredibly important. So.
We couldn't do it without you and folks like you, so thank you. Yes, sir. You said, like, general items, but may I address something regarding the cameras for the jail? Okay. Are there cameras? Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, that's during the hearing. If you'd like to make that comment during the hearing, that would be the perfect time.
As long as we get another chance, I'd be all for it.
Oh, yeah, sure. Thank you. So, you know what else? We'll load into the microphone here. We'll just, we've got two minutes to look at each other, so we'll just sort of look at each other. I've got a moment on my clock over there, so I'll go with Horizon's network time, and I have 10:30 here. So, we'll go ahead and open up our hearing. Jim, I'll, Mr. Baker, Jim, I'll kick it over to the side side here.
Okay, thank you. As you know, it takes some time in terms of posting notices and to get to this page or to this date on a budget emergency. And during that time, one of these items, the sheriff and the prosecutor or the facilities director have talked about what it's going to take to get the security cameras in the jail. And at this point, everybody believes it would be in the best interest of the county to just wait and do that next year, instead of trying to get it done between now and the end of the year. Well, we'd already done the public notice, so I think as our staff report, at this point, we can talk to the sheriff about it, but I believe that overall collectively, we've all decided that just the timing to get the engineering done and everything, it's going to take into the first part of the year anyway. There's no use doing the budget emergency at this point. And I've added it into my ordinary budget instead. So, on that one. However, the parks and facilities, extra help expenses to cover medically for two employees of $17,469, and we can talk to Joel, and he can tell you, basically, one of the reasons that facilities, and found this all out during the pledge meetings, is losing ground on all of the projects, is he's got, I think, three people now, or total of four?
It's three. It was four.
It was four, and now three people out on white duty who aren't able to do some of the work, and yet we've got these projects that need to be done. And so, I encourage Joel to ask for what he needs to do to get some extra help to cover for the rest of this year, those employees. So, that's what that $17,469 is.
I need to clarify at one point there. Actually, the bulk of it is for the injury. We had to call the next year help for our injured custodian who was injured way back in April, and he is only just now, before that's impacted work. So, we had to hire additional help for that. That's the bulk of this as far. We've got another one, another maintenance worker that's got undergo surgery that we anticipate being out for about two months. We don't know the exact date at this point, but this covers us through the end of the year, and we're just out of the red.
Which is always good. We wish your folks a speedy recovery. We're all the breaking parts.
It happens.
What happens when you get older.
Yes, it does.
Okay, at this point, we'd like to withdraw request for the supplemental for the jail cameras, but, Chuck, did you?
Well, I do agree. If we had the opportunity, I'd be more than happy if they emerged, if you debate, or we should discuss how they're. discuss the project. If you have indicated, logistically, it's just impossible, even to approve it, it would not be possible or feasible for no facilities to do what he needs to do to put it up.
So.
Before the end of the year.
Before the end of the year. So, this is something that is tangible somewhat, and we're not getting it right, and did it right, tried it first time. So, we're still going to press on. I think that I can still put a request for proposal out for this year. We have the idea that it's going to be funded in late winter, early spring, and hopefully have a lot of money. But if anyone wants to discuss it or discuss the merits, I'm talking to them, I'm going to discuss it.
Okay. Well, we can certainly hear whatever people's thoughts are on this, on this item, as it's currently written right now, and then we can just do what we need to do to modify the resolution when that gets taken up after the hearing. So, there's more than ample opportunity here to fix this. Go ahead.
More than to add on that. We did, I did actually meet with some sheriff's folks last week, must have been when I called them over here. And we did actually get the ball rolling, so to speak, so we're all on the same page, and we know what is going to be required. Should try to get a head start on that.
Okay, any questions from the board? We'll go ahead and open the hearing. There are, excuse me, five people that have signed up. Cassandra, Cassandra Valucci. It looks like she is here. Chris Johnston, did I get that halfway right? Kendriano, same address. So the explanation for the parks and facilities expenditures was a combination of extra cost for medical leave and employment of extra people?
There are some individuals involved.
The rest of it is the extra for employment. So the expenditure for the cameras for the sheriff's jail, my comments were going to be, hopefully, to take this into next year's budget, and it sounded like that's going to happen. And will this proposal be bid now? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes. If unrelated to this, it's expenditure that requires a bid.
Thank you. Thank you. Michelle Roberts. Looks like Michelle's about. Randall Terry. Randall Terry, two, three, Riverside, rather than Squim. First of all, as far as Mr. Ken Morris concerns, or Ken concerns, please take care of your men and or people, I'm sorry, if they need, if they need some help or some medical. I know that the comprehensive risk management of some people that are supposed to be, that's the third party administrator of the medical for Teamsters, I guess, they denied a lot of stuff that was legitimately requested and is still being requested by my doctors. If the county can become more involved with that, it would be a benefit to the citizens of Clonell County if the employee wants to work. If they don't want to work, it'll take a while, but take care of those people and, you don't want them up here with me. So, the jail cameras, may I ask, does the jail currently have cameras and surveillance type of?
They do.
Okay. One more question, I don't know, Joel, if you would know the answer to this. Do the road departments shops have any cameras that you know of? May I address the board? Do the road departments satellite shops in Squim, Port Angeles, or San Clonell, they have security cameras in working order, period, actually? I don't know the answer to that question. This hearing is regarding the jail. We'll certainly.
There's a connection.
Right, we'll certainly.
They might have some extra cameras. The events that led up to my injury and my injury would have been caught on camera had we had sufficient coverage of surveillance and those areas. So if you guys have cameras, and you're going to replace them, would you, I'm sure you need them? These are not, this is no replacement whatsoever.
Maybe you could sweeten the deal on the contract and ask for a few cameras at the satellite shop, because you guys have avoided reports of theft, contamination, and people doing work on the private vehicles during county time. That will be avoided mostly with the addition of security cameras. Bless such. Thank you. Thank you. And that's all the people that have signed up. Is there anyone else that cares to provide comments or testimony? If not, see no one, it was a pleasure of the board regarding closing the hearing. Move to close the hearing. Move in second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye opposed. Motion carries. Hearing is closed. What is the pleasure of the board regarding the resolution? Move to modify the resolution so that the proposal of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for sheriff's jail is excluded from the proposal. Second. Move in second. So the resolution contains only one item, parks and facilities as previously described. Further discussion? I just, I would like to recognize, Joel, you know what, you've been busy without a crew working with you. And I thank you for taking care of the business, I'm sure, especially while we have a hearing going on. Has there been a challenge?
It's been challenged.
And no whimpering, whining, or anything like that? So thank you very much, Professor Lance.
Thank you. I appreciate Joel and Sheriff Jim. Traditionally, we've kind of held off on these bigger items since late budget process, so I consider this kind of setting precedent, showing that we've got it before the board. Jim needs a department, so I appreciate the sheriff's cooperation. I will just to the 2016 budget, or probably is more organized service for your project. I don't think that that's the issue. The issue is just this kitchen, that becomes the new way of doing things. You kind of have two budget processes, and that'd be not fair to the rest of the team, so thanks for bringing that up.
Okay, all in favor of the resolution as amended? Aye opposed. Motion carries. And that is all the business that we have. Are there any other public comments on anything in general? See no one? We have no executive session this evening. There will be a budget forum road show here in this room at 6:00 PM. Where one or more commissioners will, or more than one commissioner will be in attendance. Likewise, Wednesday, the 30th, Laxley Spa and Grill in Porch at noon. And Thursday, October 1st, 6:00 PM, in the Squim Transit Center. Those are all concerned with our usual budget road show that happens this time of year. So with that, we are adjourned.